Meeting orders. First item is just public comment.
We're gonna see them like right.
Oh, they're busy. They're busy, busy. Way too busy for the likes of us.
Yeah, we're just.
That's fine.
We're just a small person here.
Yeah, we're just, we're nitpicking.
We're doing everything so perfect they can't find nothing.
Dan?
Easy, Dan.
I'll be quiet now.
Just be quiet about it.
Committee report. Jeff, you want to start?
Sure. Going along with what our highway engineer said, we're not counting on any income right now from the state of Illinois from our various funds, which you can see in your budget, all the zeros on the first page from everything from sales tax to income tax. To that end, Don and I've talked, I did not pressure him, but he is going to figure a distribution for tomorrow morning so that it'll hit and we'll, we don't have to borrow any money. So.
Well, we're not.
Will not. The fund will get about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand bucks in it, and of course, everybody else will too. I mean, we don't just distribute to ourselves, we distribute to everybody. And right now, the general fund is loaning IMRF money, and that'll, that'll free that up. It's kind of a cascade, it'll help everything. We did get seventy-five thousand dollars, eighty-five thousand dollars for probation, like they promised, the first of July. We do have due another ten thousand, which they have said that they will. I think once everything gets taken care of in Springfield, we'll start seeing the flow of money, but we have to anticipate, although we don't know for sure, because they have not told us you're not getting any funds. We're just, for safety reason, anticipating that we will not be getting any funds here real quickly, and we're still okay.
What about the money from rides, mass transit, the couple hundred thousand dollars, is that still somewhere?
The hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars was absorbed into the budget.
Okay.
Where'd you got that?
Where are we at? Okay.
Now, if you want to talk about if they owe anything else, then we need to discuss that and ask the state's attorney to, to do something about that.
What about property?
The sale of property, they had a auction, all of that needs to be answered at some point in time.
Okay. I just wanted to.
Property sale and then the auction off and stuff, and we've received nothing.
So, you know, we need to, you know, as a board collectively agree that we need to seek information about that possibly, or not, and then ask the state's attorney to, I guess, check into that. That's up to you, you know, everybody as a whole, rather than just one person. Okay? We have, at the end of this month, sixty-six point six seven percent of the year has elapsed. We're at sixty-three percent of the budget, even though your back page of the budget shows, I think, fifty-one point four seven, but you have to add in a couple of payrolls for this month, and so, to give you an idea where we sit, that's sixty-three thousand. Now, or sixty-three percent. Now, we front-load about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of bills into this first seven, eight months that we do not recur, so, but without that, it seems like we're on course to do what we need to do as far as debt reduction. We do have some departments that are somewhat over. Jeff has received a check from the ESDA, no, I'm sorry, from nine-one-one for almost twenty thousand dollars, of which thirty-two hundred is roughly reimbursement for the second chair, and we're gonna go ahead and take the sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two and apply that to the line item that they expend for training, which will.
Now, when, they, you talking about nine-one-one or Jeff?
Okay, I, I forgot where we were. Nine-one-one sent us a check for almost twenty grand.
Okay.
Thirty-two hundred, I'm rounding it off, thirty-two hundred comes to us as part of the second chair, and then sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two is for training and payroll. So, that will go into the payroll account for dispatchers, thus reducing that deficit, or not deficit, but reducing the amount that that's.
On the sheriff's budget.
On the sheriff's budget.
Okay, okay. I thought they.
Because they're paying for training as.
Right.
As they will.
And then in the future, with the new budget, and this, why we didn't do this before, I don't know, but we'll adjust that in line items so that the new budget will, will take care of this, so that the budget.
You had with some discussion that you were gonna create a.
Right.
Okay.
Right. I'm just informing the board.
I, I.
I wanted to also ask the sheriff, they noticed on some of your bills, you had computers and leads, and that all came out of leads. Had we, and I'm just asking, I'm not arguing, hadn't we said that we were gonna take some of those out of a different fund, the computers?
The computers come out, the computers themselves come out of the, I'd have to check, the DUI or the failure to pierce them?
No, they didn't, that's why I'm checking, you need to check that. I think it got coded wrong, Jeff, and so, it's currently coming out of, hang on, I'll tell you.
Out of the leads fund then.
Yes, it's coming out of.
That's why that leads fund saw over. Okay, I saw that.
And I, I, I thought.
It's a hundred and seventy-eight percent.
Right, well, and I thought that there was three or four grand for computers, and those were gonna come out of the other fund.
Right.
And all you have to do is call Don and tell him that that was miscoded, if it is in fact miscoded, and he will correct that before it becomes.
Yeah, because there's that initial thousand dollar hookup installment fee, like a forty-two dollar fee.
Right.
Just so we're all, we're talking about the onboard computers in the squad cars that we got a year ago, or a year and a half ago.
Two years ago, probably.
Anyway, with these things.
Probably outdated now.
What we've just talked about.
They are.
With, with Jeff's next two payrolls, he's at sixty-six point five percent. Okay? And we're at sixty-six point six percent of the year. So, by that much, we're okay. Now, I don't can't guarantee how.
Could you please repeat that?
Yeah.
Chill it, chill it next time.
That much.
You seem like that guy's cost us this weekend, isn't it?
Well, I'm just saying that it's, we're, we're working together, and it's working out, and we're managing what we're doing.
I mean.
I know.
We had a good weekend, so, I mean, money was well spent this weekend.
All right, well, at any rate, I just wanted to cover that. As far as the airport, we have a meeting coming up next Monday night, okay, not tonight, a week from tonight. I have had communications with Mr. Hubbard, but they've been a couple of weeks ago, and I haven't heard anything.
I wonder if you heard anything since you said.
I have not, since I said everything, and, you know, I gave, I also asked him for some input as far as what, what he was expecting. I think that's only fair to, to try to give us an idea.
Okay.
But I thought I would call him sometime in the next few days before the meeting to find out, you know, if he was gonna be intent inviting to the meeting, whatever, okay? So, that's where we're at on that. Ben, have I forgot, okay? I don't think so. Augie's letter, I think, is in, we need to make sure that we get any input back to him on the adjustment for the October payroll.
Well, we haven't sent down already, I thought we.
No.
We're gonna go over that in Augie's presentation, right?
Okay.
Today.
You go over one area, you wanna do it now, I can do it later, doesn't matter.
Yeah, say.
It's payroll, it's money, it's budget. Did you all receive a copy? I sent that email out regarding the third pay in October. Would you like a copy of it in front of you now?
I would, because I didn't bring it with me, I think Ben does.
And speaking on Ben's behalf, I think we just wanted to have something on, something formal for the board, if you guys want one.
You good? Right, well, we all agreed that you were gonna do a letter, and we were.
Kinda learned our lesson on armed employees, yeah.
Yeah. We don't necessarily need a motion, but I think it should be.
Just to acknowledge that that's what's gonna happen in October, and then this letter can go out, and I, I don't mean.
I think you wanted us to say if, if there's anything we had a problem in.
That's what I wanted you to do, I wanted you to review that letter, and I wanted you to get back to me, preferably bef, well, preferably before Wednesday, just so you, that's the meeting.
This is not your fault, nor are you in trouble.
And now, listen, and this is a draft.
I know, I know.
Okay. And I want you to feel free to mark it up, down, whatever.
We just.
It's pretty much exactly what we talked.
Yeah, and it's the best way to explain it.
And I did pass it on to our, our accountant.
Now, I, I did ask Don to look at it and get back to me, and haven't heard from him, but I will get in touch with him. And if Ben's comfortable with that, you can sleep on it, let me know Wednesday, or let me know tomorrow, so I can make changes.
Does anybody see a problem with that?
The only thing I, and I can't remember what it said in that contract. That'd be my only worry, is if there's some, is there some payroll issue in that contract?
It's not going to contract.
Contracts doesn't affect any of our contracts, because all those people are paid correctly.
Okay.
All right, paid correctly.
All already paid correctly. And there are certain employees that are being paid correctly that have come on fairly recently, so, we've got it all over the place. This'll put everybody on the same footing.
Okay.
Okay? Without exception.
Okay.
And with notice, okay?
Okay.
No, those are all good questions.
I just.
Anything else?
I don't think so, I'll probably think of something in a minute, but not right now.
Andy?
I got a few seconds. I got an estimate, start with the little stuff first, I guess. I got an estimate back on putting a system, air conditioning system in the downstairs courtroom. And this is for Paris Refrigeration, it's fourteen, more than what I thought they'd say this. They put two heads inside the unit, put it in the center, and air condition, that'll also heat that room.
Fourteen grand?
Fourteen grand.
Does it hang from the ceiling, Andy?
It's incorporated into the ceiling.
Okay.
Say it hangs, is, yeah, but it's, it's a little more than what I, now, he said that's a Mitsubishi system. And he thinks that that's, there's another, I think it's Dai-kan.
Daikin.
Not Dai-kan. That he said is, is a little less expensive, that he felt, like the Mitsubishi system's a lot better system. But it's a little more than what I thought it was gonna be.
Andy, refresh my, if we got, and I probably wasn't listening, should have been, what is our issues in the lower courtroom?
Well, they can't.
They have to shut the air conditioning off here, just to hear.
We do sometimes.
Okay, and there's no sound attenuation that we can do with the existing system that would help us? Because I know, like, up at the Civic Center in Dando, we had that issue, and we went in with the sound attenuation, and that.
What, now, what's that, what are you?
In other words, you turn corners, and you put baffles, and you do things that deaden the sound.
Okay. I think the biggest problem there, and I, I'm not, I don't know about this, they've got two window air conditioners, and they're sitting right about.
Okay, that, that you can't sell that way.
That's the problem.
You ought to hear when they kick on, I mean.
Well, we have, remember, Don's had to turn them off. You answer, I, you said that, I wasn't.
We had to shut them off one time.
But to replace two window air conditioners with fourteen grand seems a little, it seems a little out of.
You're also, I think, putting in a lot more, you're putting in a six-ton air conditioning, which.
That's for one room?
That seems like a lot.
Yes.
You could hang meat in there.
Well, it's a hanging judge.
So.
That one's a heater and air conditioner.
Wait a minute, that's all, that's one, three-ton, you know, that's more like it, rather than two.
Ben, what's your opinion of that?
Have you put, have you put any of those in? Any Mitsubishi, or you have to be?
Usually have to be trained.
Trained for Mitsubishi?
That's what they recommend.
Can you put in a Mitsubishi? Okay, I didn't know.
That's what I told him, I remember.
I know, I know, they went to some kind of a school or something, put in Mitsubishi.
I've put in Dai-kan, and I've put mini split, comfort maker. My opinion of these, they're great.
That's what we talked about, you know.
All right, I'll, I'll call you.
What would you, I guess part of my concern is, yeah, I'd like to get some more estimates from some other people, but how, how, what's the best procedure to go through to do that, advertise it?
I've got a question.
Okay.
And it's basically for you, do they make a window unit now, I mean, I don't know how old those are, but do they make a window unit that's quieter?
Them are.
Those are for.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
Can they be used elsewhere then, too?
Sure, they've got them in different offices now, eventually probably all.
So, were we oversized, Ben?
No, three, I read wrong, three-ton probably isn't oversized. I, I was reading that.
That's fine.
But still, I keep this first, I'm trying, you can't.
Yeah, the nice thing about it is, it's always wrong with it, you gotta go right around the corner to come work on it.
I still think it should be bid.
No, I do too.
I mean, even though it falls under our.
Yeah.
There's more refrigeration, or air conditioning people in Paris or in Niagara County that will give you a price, and you can. Yes, I think so.
And you don't, you don't have to specify, do you want to specify the type of unit? It just has to be specifications and.
He's got a three-ton unit. If that's what you want, you can specify that you want three-ton, mini split. If you want it in the ceiling, rather than on the wall, then you can, you can specify that, and that's. Yes.
And the insulation, and the minimum warranty, and.
Yeah, this has got, so it's five years on person, seven years on the compressor for this. I actually think Dai-kan's warranty's better than that.
You think it is?
I believe.
He was a little concerned about the Dai-kan, the heating aspect of, I guess what I, I, and, and not that I'm, that's just the first one I've gotten, I, it's taken a while to get that one to me, I just kinda wanted to see where we are on it. Yes, I definitely think you need to.
Yeah, the.
Ask some other companies.
The Dai-kan actually uses a heat pump, and it doesn't have any secondary heat. And they say you don't need it down to ten below, but you wouldn't have to worry about it, because you've got a secondary heat in the boiler that you can use, like, this, this is supposed to be cheaper.
Right, that's, I guess that's part of what I'm looking, I know, and I haven't had a chance to go over, look, they said, you know, the old main building over at Eastern, that they put these units in there, because it's, it's a similar, difficult thing to put, to run duck work and things, so they put these systems over there and cut their energy bills quite a bit. I've talked to a guy that works over there, and I'd like, I wanna go over there and take a look at it, and see how they, what systems they've got, how it works over there. Anyway, at least, I, I, I guess I'm looking a little into the future too, and maybe eventually put more of these around in the offices downstairs eventually, where, where you could heat, and if they're successful, where you could heat and air condition the downstairs a lot more efficiently.
Well, that boiler's gotta be expensive, and it's, and it's looking like it's gonna be expensive for us to maintain, we put a new exhaust pipe in and all that, this might be the direction to be heading.
Well, everything's predicated also, what's it gonna cost to repair that roof?
Yeah.
And I don't, that's the, that's the next.
See, we've only got about forty, forty-five thousand left in us.
And that's a good point. This is great.
But do we need to?
But we can get by with the noisy thing, yeah.
Right.
Right.
Most of the year, it's, you know, obviously, right now, it's an issue. But you could also turn those on early and get the room cooled, and then when you turn it off, you've got X amount of time before it heads south again.
Yeah, and I think that's what they.
All to do.
Bob goes in, turns them on early in the morning, and he gets there, gets it pretty cool.
No, he didn't.
He doesn't?
He doesn't.
No. For the board meeting or the court?
Not for the board, for the court.
I can't speak to that.
Okay.
For the board meeting, Ben, I do that.
You do that?
Yes.
Well, what I'm saying is, I think we, nothing stands alone, I think we gotta look at everything we're trying to do, and then prioritize it.
Because the rest's a big thing. I'll pass this around, and everybody can look at it, I got, this is that Midland, or, Midland Engineering got back, I was a little disappointed. Everybody read, has everybody read that?
I sent that out to everybody.
Yeah, we only got one picture, is that we are.
I couldn't get the picture.
I couldn't either.
It's too big a file to open.
That's what it says.
I put it now.
Do you have a Dropbox account?
You know, Dropbox?
Yeah, but I haven't done it.
That's the only way I found it, I, I got ahold of Arnie Johnson, I called him after I got this, and I said, told him what they said, and I said, they've got a lot of pictures, he goes, he goes, that's a standard response to, to the, that situation. He goes, I, I don't know if that's what you need, up to the point, he said, send me the pictures and the letter, he's looking at them. I looked for him, he's gonna, he goes, I don't charge anything yet, he goes, I've got a, an architect that will, will take a look at it, see what, what we think, he goes, I, I, whether you need that extensive of a project done or not. So, I'm still in the waiting game, I guess, and I with Arnie. But he's, at least, I think he'll give us a good objective opinion on what the pictures show and what we need. But.
It scares me.
Is there any?
Parts of it are pretty bad.
Is there anything that'll pay for this, Jeff, any?
Well, we've tried, I, I've looked into, you know, when I talked to Kelly.
Right. That's where it's discussed.
The one, what is that? Historic structures in Illinois, uh, yeah, that's where we got some money last time. That basically, I guess it was a private individual that was giving large amounts of money, that.
Dry house, dry house.
Yes, that's dry, that's no longer available. About all they have is some, is like a twenty-five hundred dollar grant that you can get through them at this point.
Which I wouldn't pay for the engineering.
Landmarks. Landmarks Illinois, but that's.
But I hope he's firm, just being good with them, you would get that.
Yeah, anything, anybody can throw our way.
Oh, yeah, I'd.
We're gonna check down anything, but. You know, and I, and I look at this, and I think, just before, you know, getting the car before the horse, I wanna see what Arnie tells me.
Yeah, I think that's a good place to.
He seemed to think, he goes, what I was really hoping was someone could come in and say, okay, we'll give you a crew, tell us what you charges for a crew for a week to come in, and we'll take care of part of it, maybe, he goes, get that on an ongoing program where you do that every year, how someone come down for.
And know pretty much what you're talking about, and then we can budget it in, budget it in, and that.
I think, I think a big cost is gonna be scaffolding and stuff like that.
Apparently, they're not gonna scaffold, or he wouldn't have them in that.
Yeah, not if, not if you go around the way that Arnie was talking.
Yeah, 'cause you are correct, though, that is a major deal.
Yeah.
And if we can avoid that.
Keep those lips off the concrete, Andy.
Wow, I did find a couple of those places, well, the one obviously was one they did, but Bob showed me a couple of other places that need to be fixed. Those were actually in those pictures that Arnie sent, they'd already been, where you were, he showed a couple of places where they.
Yeah, I saw around on the south side, there's that, right, that deep up there in the, in the yard.
Yeah, well.
Saying that's some of the.
But some on the concrete, that was some that was there from the last time.
I don't know, that might have been our, our air conditioner thing, too, I don't know if Tom did that, or.
No, this.
I'm part of that, in this picture.
Well, Bob took me around, showed me a couple of places on the other side, when I say the other side, on the, that would be kind of the south.
East.
Yeah, the south. And those were actually pictures that Arnie had sent, that said he, he lives when he was here in.
I was gonna ask you to, have you got that fixed and added?
He hasn't gotten back, right, and he's got this stuff to do it.
We need to get that done before Arnie comes.
I know, we do.
So, he can be proud of us, or say, you did it wrong.
It's pretty straightforward to fix it. Anyway, at this point, I think, we'll wait, see what Arnie says, if he thinks what we did. If anybody, you got, you haven't seen any of the pictures.
I'm just the picture of the thumb on the page, is all I.
Andy, I'll, I'll print off a master copy in color of those pictures.
Okay.
And I'll, we can circulate that Wednesday.
Or, or, like I said, anybody's got, if you don't have Dropbox, you.
I probably don't, since I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
It's a picture file that, that you can actually send these pictures through on the internet. That's a problem, it wouldn't come through, because it's too big.
That's what I figured.
I mean, shoot, it was megabytes of.
Well, I feel better, I thought I was just too damn stupid to get them.
No, I tried it, tried it, finally, I just, I created Dropbox account, put it in there, and then.
Is it gonna be?
I've seen them, some of it's pretty revealing.
So, can I put this on hold until we get some?
I, what's that, this, yeah, I just, I wanted to share that with you.
Because if we got real problems.
I know, there's only so much, you know, we go, yeah, I think we, I'm afraid of you too, and when you look at some of these pictures.
Well, we probably, Andy, we ought to have a building committee meeting, probably, we get some of those pictures, and with that, kinda discuss it, too.
When is your regular one?
So, you wanna, you wanna print some of those out, Augie?
Yeah, I thought I would make a colored master copy of all those pictures, I'll make one, and we just circulate it.
Okay.
There's a lot of pictures.
There's a lot.
And it's a lot of colored ink, and if I can keep from having to make.
I've got your emails, I'll send it Dropbox, and then you can sit on there and try to think about it.
I got it there, I'll, I'll try it.
But it's, I mean, that's, it's a good program, and if you don't have it, when you try to open it, it will ask you if you wanna install Dropbox, and you can, then you can open it. But it's, there's some pictures, it, it definitely needs attention.
Look like Swiss cheese.
Yes, parts of it do.
That's what I figured.
You can't be pissed with paint, remember?
Yeah, well, you can't paint over rust holes, that's a problem, he said, and there are some places rusted out.
In the tin, in the tin part, yeah.
Or you're welcome to come to my office and look at them, I've got them loaded up.
Are you gonna be there?
Yes, sir.
Take some time, it's a hundred and eighty pictures.
Whoa. Well, I didn't even count them, Andy, yeah, there's a lot of.
My hand crank computer could've done that. You don't have that much electricity?
He's got that old Scylla's GoPro.
You're gonna flibby, flibby, flibby. You still stick these things, look like ice picks, and get cards out, Ben, that's how you work.
He's getting one of those viewers staring.
Is there anything else?
No, I guess I do want, just, oh, Illinois Energy, Illinois Energy now, that is start, they're gonna start letting that in the next month or so, I think. Kelly said, I got, one of us, I gotta, gotta go to a class, and it'll tell us, we'll get some kind of grant money.
Just like those things. Make sure I know when that is, so I can go.
I'll keep track.
How much is it?
I don't know that it's a.
I don't think there is.
You kinda do an assessment?
Well, that's why I need to know.
Doors, lights.
We've, we've done the whole courthouse with that.
You already did?
We done, all the lights have been changed from T-12 to T-8 bulbs.
Okay.
And Alaska Studian, what's his name?
Jim?
Jim Parrish, he, yeah, he done most of the changes, but, but it was with the Illinois grant.
And there's some, there's also some, some energy audits and different things under that that you could have done, it probably wouldn't hurt at all to have them, so.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
Dan?
Admiral Shelter meeting, March twelve, probably is not to be canceled, Andy can't be there, and I gotta take a patient, Carl, in the afternoon, Alan must be out of town also.
Hit it.
So, I will have Andrew put a notice up, and we'll just reschedule some other times. I check every week out there anyway, so, as far as I know, everything's looking smoothly. They still don't have the fence up or the outside pin, but Bob said he'd do it when the weather got a little cooler. We're gonna put the fence on the outside, so people can bring, come in, look at the dog, try to get used to the dogs. And we have donation for this. Is that all right?
Yeah. Yeah, I was just looking at Mike.
The health, health department, the meeting last time, they said go ahead with replacing the heating cooling system, so I've been working on trying to get an engineer, engineering firm to give us an estimate, I have talked to one. And at first they thought they could do it. And we're starting to cold feet because of the politics of the county. I might wanna put that in the paper too. Just trying to save some money. Those are two that I've talked to. One is asking thirty to forty thousand just for the engineering part. The other one I talked to in Terre Haute said it's eight, eight to ten percent of the total cost of the project, which is.
Customizing.
So you're talking about ten to fifteen thousand just for the engineering part. This firm, I think I can get a lot cheaper. I'm not gonna tell you the name of the firm, but.
But they're got cold feet.
Yeah. The cubs or the watchdogs. So, but that'll.
Well, sooner or later, you're gonna have to bid this thing, okay? So, I mean.
I'm just waiting on this one here. If this one says no, then I'll go back and find one. So.
Whatever.
I know.
I just, why are you getting stuck with this?
Cause nobody else wants to do it.
Well.
I don't know, I understand.
You shouldn't have to be doing.
No, you should not be doing this. This is not your job.
I know, I understand. Well, I took on the responsibility.
You're kinda volunteered.
Yeah, I'm all too. Just like the market.
As long as you're not being held under somebody's coercive.
I understand.
I mean, we, our went down there, that, you need to do something. They're gonna have to do something before winter.
Right.
Cause I think that, uh, manifold on the gas furnace they got down there is leaking.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a deal.
What happens if it just quits? Can we go ahead and do it without going through all this here?
Well, why would you?
Situation?
If that. If your boiler breaks down. Probably the insurance will take care of it depending on what cost it. You know, like a crack boiler.
Of course they did the one in the courthouse.
Assuming that you have boiler insurance, we didn't have that.
It just. Get frustrated. I'll just say, yeah, I'll go ahead and do it.
Who has the insurance on this? The county has the insurance on it?
So you'd have to check with Rita. The, uh, the thing is, the engineering, you need to, you know, sooner or later, you're gonna have to bite the bullet on it.
Right, but it doesn't have to bid, but I'd like to bid it.
Right, you don't have to bid it for professional, but it's, you can.
Yeah. I'm waiting for this third group. I'm pretty sure it's gonna be a lot cheaper. Problem is when you see the name of the engineering firm that Watchdog is gonna do a hot.
I, I don't understand that. All you do is do the engineering specification. Tell them you want them to decide with what it was. And ask them to bid, ask them to bid. Everybody bids, that's it. I, I don't know why you keep, I'm sorry, I don't understand why you're going to different engineering firms. Well, but the bid is gonna save you the money, not that.
Right.
You've still gotta bid it.
I know.
So, why not just come up with some specifications and try it?
Yeah.
Instead of going to all, waiting for all these firms to, cause. Winter will be here for you. Right.
I'll have to quit to quit.
But you're, Dan, you're not planning on bidding out for the engineering. Is that what you're saying? You're gonna do, you're gonna do that and then you gotta turn around and bid out for the work?
I don't wanna bid the engineering.
You don't wanna bid the engineering. See, that's where there's a disconnect.
Trying to find the cheapest without bidding. So the firm that I'm dealing with now probably can do it the cheapest. And it's a local firm.
How much did you say the one?
The one from Champaign is thirty to forty thousand.
I see, the one you go thirty, forty thousand then.
And six thousand, just come down, spent half a day looking at it.
I don't understand. We're, if it's a local firm, let them complain. I mean, it's just.
Told him. It's, I don't give a, I don't care if you complain. But, uh, it's Francis Associates.
Well, I've already figured that out.
I figured that out. I talked to Bob. At first he said, yeah, I would do it. And then the last time I talked to him, he was being a little itty. But I know it's gonna be a heck lot cheaper than what these two people are asking for. The one in Terre Haute and the one in Champaign. I said, I don't care about what the watchdogs say.
Well, we're still getting here.
What we do in accounting. That's my point.
Did, did McClinock, did you talk to him?
He's, he's not qualified to do that type of.
Some kind of an engineer.
And doesn't want to.
And doesn't want to. I've talked to him.
So Bob has someone that does mechanical engineering then?
Yeah, he has engineers in his department that can do it. He said he won't even sign it. The engineer that sets it up and does the specs will sign it. His name won't be on it. Because he's not really a true engineer and that's the watchdog's problem with them.
With Bob.
With Bob.
Right.
But they don't like it anyway.
Signs.
Yeah.
That's my position. And I tried to tell him that. So, I, I'll see him again this week. I know, it's frustrating. Bet I could go with the thirty and forty thousand of Champaign. I can go with the eight to ten percent.
Then you would have to size the.
The thirty and forty thousand and the eight and ten is probably gonna be about the same.
Well, I know, project, they said the, as from we got was a hundred and fifty from the, uh, heating cooling contractor in Terre Haute.
Yes, but, but they charge ten, eight to fifty, eight, eight to ten, whatever you said.
Right.
They charge that plus expenses.
Okay.
You know, your, their meals and if they stay over here and that's all extra.
Well, if, if, if Francis Associates tells me they're not gonna do it, then I'll probably get the one from Terre Haute. These contractors twice.
What's their name?
We're not trying to second, it's just, it's just, we're not trying to, we're not being critical. It's just.
Now, I understand too why they don't find somebody to do the, the health department, find somebody to take the reins a bit. But you look at who's on the committee. I mean, you have three doctors, you have Ollie Smith, you got Ginger Rogers. I mean, they're gonna.
Ginger Johnson.
Ginger Johnson. Does Ginger Rogers contribute? That dates you, Dan.
The only one to be Janet and see them on mess with us.
Well, but you know what? That's part of her, that's part of her job.
Yes. Then she may get it pretty soon.
I'm sorry, I mean, we aren't paying her.
I know. I'll try, I'll wait.
It is part, it's part of her job to locate.
Right.
What you're having to do.
Right.
Yeah, but it may be outside of her expertise. Well, it's time, it's time. My expertise, I'm learning more as I do.
You can't teach a new dog new tricks. That's incorrect, Dan.
You're gonna have to know just about everything and you're gonna have to run again on the board so you can.
I'm not gonna run for chairman. You got that. One other thing I just happened to thank, July fifteenth is the, uh, this has the sheriff department, negotiations for the, uh, sheriff deputies for at Union, uh, July fifteenth.
Do you think maybe Carl, or do you think we should get together before then like we talked about?
Yeah, probably would hurt some of that.
Well, we talked about it, so you wanna get ahold of Carl and see what he wants to. I know, but I mean, Carl is the chairman.
Your, your July fifteenth meeting will really be introducing one another and.
Yeah, pretty much.
It usually, first meeting usually gonna last very long. They maybe give a proposal, but I don't even know if they do that the first meeting.
They, kind of look like maybe they might present a couple of things right off the top of their head. I was.
I thought maybe if we looked organized, it might not be a bad, uh, bad thing to go in. Cause it sounds, they requested all kinds of information from Jeff here last week and.
You're just on the wrong side now.
I know. Yeah, that's true. Yeah, okay, that's it. I will take care of the animal shelter. I don't think we'll be tomorrow.
Mike?
Uh. Carl's not here, cause he's on the, he's actually the sheriff's chairman, but we talked about it this morning while he was back and, uh. We're trying to find delegates to go to Denver. And, uh, I, I spoke to Andy.
All right, if you can get Carl to go, okay.
He can't. Brad's having surgery that week.
Well, I, I, I would if you wanted to.
Okay.
Cause I can't go those dates. I look, uh.
So, so it looks like you, me and Andy, and we need a, we need a fourth guy now. Uh, Donnie can't go and, and they, I think they suggested somebody in, in the treasury go. I, I haven't talked to Alan Zuber yet, uh, that, that Carl suggested that we set him down and see if we could get him to go. A little bit.
Are you just going?
I'm, I'm not gonna be.
Well, that's right.
I'm not gonna be around.
You're coming.
It would be. It'd be who, I mean, and that, and that's, I, I guess I, I shouldn't sit here and say I'm making this decision, cause I'm, I mean, that may have to come with you, chairman, saying this is who I want to go, or the board say this is what we ought to do. I don't know how that works, but right now it's a, we're trying to get as many people, we need to get four chairs out there and those people need to be willing to. Put some time.
I wanted, thought. Board members is gonna be on here a while, which doesn't include me. And Don or Augie, because they're gonna be around. After we're gone, probably.
Well, I, I went and met with Don, middle of the week, and he just pretty adamant that he, his dad and the situation.
Yeah, there you go.
That's his.
Yes.
His thing.
But that was the thought on having somebody like that that's gonna be around one.
Right.
Because this, this won't be done.
Oh, no, this, this is a lo- long, long range thing.
Right.
And, um, uh, I, I've just, I've talked to Jerry Parsley about this, uh, several times. And even before this came up, and he says, you know, that's what they did, is they got long range plans. They started and they, they knew all the objections. They knew all the negative things they were gonna hit. And lo and behold, they've got a nice new jail. And I think it's pretty well paid for. So, um, I don't know all the details, but hi- his suggestion was this is the best thing you can do.
When did they build it?
The Clark County Jail? Oh, I think it was about five years ago, wasn't it?
Uh, five, seven, somewhere in there.
And you say it's pretty much paid for?
I, I don't, I think, I think.
Well, they, they built along the existing structure though, right?
Yeah. And that was a, that was on, remember when they did that Clark County Jail was back, well, that was back in the Jack Good days. Yeah, well, that was before, it was right after.
Well, I hadn't been here very long because that was gonna be like a seven or eight million dollar deal. And by the time they got around to wanting to do it, then it was like a ten or eleven million dollar deal. And then they re, they regrouped and.
I think they put a, I think that's key, a sales tax on for that too.
The sales tax, a lot of these people are using, are putting a.
Safety tax.
Safety tax, crime prevention tax. It's like, I mean, one half of one percent or something that they're sticking on and.
On sales tax.
Is that what it is? Is it, okay.
They're not levying.
Was. And it can only, it's added on the sales tax and it can only be used for specific things.
Right. About the passengers.
Well, you'd have to do, you'd have to get a citizens grouped together. You'd have to, you know, you'd have to sell.
Yeah, you'd have to sell and explain what's going on.
The main, the main thing that I wanna emphasize is, years ago, I talked to people in Clark County about sitting down with Edgar County at the, at Oliver and talking about putting a, a regional facility shared with Clark and Edgar there. And nobody wanted to talk about it. That just was, nobody was interested in that.
One of the big suggestions now, but the problem with us is, the border with Indiana on one side, so that completely wipes them out. And everybody else is setting on new facilities. So, you know, wants to go, go partner.
Well, Coles, Coles is gonna have to do something eventually. Now, I, I can't foresee them coming to Ashmore or something like that, but they're again, those are, that's part of the reason for going on this. And I emphasize again, and to the camera, that's free, a hundred percent free to Edgar County. We don't, it won't cost us anything. So those are kinda the ideas. Um, my brother Ron's on the Jasper County Board and, and he's trying to get a group to go to, cause they, their jails are more shaped than ours. So, um, they're, they're very interested in a long range plan that, that would, would help them. And it's like, everybody looks at this, well, we can't do this because, well, I'm hoping we get out there and they tell us, well, here's how you get this done. We'll put together a financial fact sheet for you, a little bit about bonding authority and everything else. That's, that would be very. So that you, when you go out there, you'll have, you know, just a sheet of paper and. Here's what we can do. This is what we have. This is our resources.
Well, when I was out there in April, of course, the last day, they kinda told us some of the other programs they had. And this is one of the programs they brought up, which they said, before you do this, you need to do this jail.
Evaluation.
Evaluation, which come to find out, we'd done, they'd been done three, three years ago. So I've gotta send all this to this lady when she gets her email to me. But they, when I was out there, I got a video. And I haven't watched it yet, but it's something like we can put on the county website. It's basically a little something that people can watch and kinda put your mind at ease and it's not gonna this is how it's taxed and this is how it's financed and blah, blah, blah.
Right, it's not gonna break the county.
Yeah, it's not gonna break the county. It's not, and it's gonna be put on where your, most people won't even notice it's on there.
You think it'd be, be a, put to somebody in the community?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I don't know how, I, I, I was gonna ask Jeff that. That's one of the reasons I wanted him here today. We, we discussed taking his administrator and, and like Jeff said, he doesn't think at this time that's gonna be.
Team members must have key policymaking and decision-making roles in the new de, new jail project, is the way they work. So. County commissioner, county supervisor, executive administrators.
I'm not too sure that as this thing gets a little further down the road, that we couldn't get some member of the community.
You're gonna have to get a community committee.
Right.
To say we need to do this, just like we had to on the courthouse, or you're never gonna get the, you have to get support for the project.
Right.
But maybe you're not that far along.
And that might title, we all know individuals in the community that are, that have got the time, that could take this up and say, you know, I'm gonna, you, you know, we're gonna make this happen. And they can pick up the phone and get a lot of cooperation.
First thing we have to do is get them to say it needs to happen.
Well, I think we've already got that in that shape of that, that jail evaluation. Cause if anybody looked at that, they're gonna think it, it needs to happen. I don't think, with the letters from the DOC and the, and the prior sheriffs.
They have to come up with the option.
Do what, sir?
They have to come up with the option, just like I, we had an option of tearing the whole top off the courthouse. But that wasn't an option that people were interested in when, when we got the committee together. So, so that's what I'm saying. We need them to come up with the same conclusion that we've come up with.
And talk about, we could just remodel up there.
Yes, exactly.
Told us how to do that.
That's what.
Just tear everything down but the cornerstone and start fresh.
Yeah. What, what are they gonna do with the old school?
Well, like moving, uh, any, any else type, moving stuff in right now.
Are they gonna razz it?
Oh, you mean the old, not the.
That's just the.
That's a.
Aguirre.
Aguirre, yeah.
The old school, I, I would, yeah.
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna razz it, aren't they? I thought that's what they were gonna tear it down.
Heard that.
Okay. I just heard that. I don't know that there's anything substantial. City owns it now. Yes, I know that. I just wondered what they were, I, I don't know whether that's either an option. Well, you know, that shot, that shot one of my other ideas one time, Jeff, when we were talking about relocating to another area. And they said, you can't, like, I was talking about the old Ford building. They said, it's too close to the school. Well, if you've got any kind of a school facility, you can't be within a thousand feet of a school facility. But there is a school there. Well, and they else gonna start a, a college here.
That's private.
Okay, okay, I'm just. It's not a public school.
I was just training here.
Training.
It's training.
I'm just.
Right.
I just.
Nah, I've heard now, but I don't know that they, they were thinking about putting apartments in there.
No, you couldn't afford it. I mean, that, I mean, that was, that was the talk of. It's not handicapped or something.
I just don't think we should just throw anything out of the basket. No, that's a great idea. That, that's a, that's a great idea for what you're talking about. Yeah, I don't know whether that's possible. You could put administrative in there. You could, that could be, we could sell the Crickman building and go for that. We talked about. Other offices in there. About the armory out there, uh, you know, if we could ever get, the, the city's gonna get, in, the future's gonna get possession of that armory and what they're gonna do with that, you know, uh, there's been some conversation with the mayor. Gee, would, would that make sense to put some money into that, remodel that? I heard that was going, gonna be used by somebody else.
National Guard.
No, the old building.
I think the old building, they're gonna continue to use it for certain things, but move the heavy equipment out to a new building.
I knew there was something. Okay, it, it's changed in the years that we've talked. Yeah, and if they change again, we need to be in the mix on our options. Right, and, and Jeff and I, and I think several of you guys, or Andy, were out at the Crickman building, eyeballing that. I mean, that, that might, you, you know, somebody smarter than us could maybe put that together and make a jail out of it.
Of course, I think the problem right there is space, but if, you know, come in lots around there, we're never coming up for sale.
Of course, I think the problem right there is space, but if, you know, some of the lots around there would never come up for sale. And that Crickman setup, I mean, in my opinion, set up to do a lot of, a lot of stuff there.
Yeah, you'd have your Sallyport in the back and you'd have your.
A building.
I just think it all ought to be laid on the table. And once you come back, you may have a better idea.
They gonna look at them things? Or that isn't part of their? We have to come up with what we want to do.
You know, they're. You know, let, let us look at any, any possibility. I mean, whether they're rebuilt from something that's already out here or.
But I, I, I think we oughta at least let the city know that we're.
I'm, I'm hoping we get out there and it's, they say, here's the pros, here's the cons, to this, 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 and this. Because this many counties tried this and it was not productive. But they went and did this, and this seemed to be the most productive in a county your size and with, with your wants and needs. You know, do we, do we design a jail with a courthouse in it so the judge should come to it? Do we, so we don't have to transport? Do we come out here west of the county highway and put up a bill? All those scenarios are, you know, do we do that town on the east side of the square? I mean, there's, who knows?
Gentlemen? Anything else?
Not that I can think of, unless you've got something else. Augie?
Yeah, I do have one more thing, and that is the first letter that I sent to you gentlemen regarding the twenty-two dollar, or regarding the insured, yeah, yeah, twenty-two dollar. Increase that we talked about at our class. I do have.
I thought the Andy, or the Alan Zuber changed.
Well, what we're doing right now is making the decision for him to send them out, correct? If we don't see a problem with it.
Oh, yeah, right.
Is that correct?
Is it still necessary to send that out?
I just threw it out there because I was volunteered or asked to draft a letter and.
No, no.
If you guys wanna send it.
Well, I think probably oughta address it to them.
And I think that Alan Zuber changed.
Yes, I have.
Everybody got Carl, right?
No, I thought Augie did a good job on both the letters.
This is the second one, after Alan changed it.
He did a good job on both letters.
Thank you, thank you.
Are they perfect? No.
I thought you had to leave.
That's fine.
See you, Jeff.
You, you don't have a problem? Anybody have a problem?
No, I don't. Look good.
Just sign it, Mr. Chairman, would be my suggestion.
That's what I needed.
I mean, you, you in theory can do whatever you want anyway, so.
Yeah, that's only in theory.
Yeah.
That's why we need you guys on tape to prove that, so. Anything else, Augie?
Um, no, the, the agenda for the board meeting is pretty self-explanatory. Um, I'm not aware of anything. Unusual.
Which is a fair start, I can't interrupt you.
Eighteenth of?
I think so.
Okay, anyway, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, I think that's all I got.
Let's blur it again now.
Jeff, you got anything?
I don't think so, Jeff. Jail's been kind of, kind of covered.
Gary, you got anything? Not entertaining. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
We're motioning second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, more adjourned.
Stay on the outside, Gary. Don't let those bugs get you. Go get some bugger.
Those gnats are vicious.
Environmentally safe. My son was saying how that works a lot better than whatever stuff that's got a bunch of de.
It's too spicy. It's too spicy to get it out.
Something that he got. Whatever it was, he says, and he's, he's out in the woods all the time. It works a lot better.
Smells good.
And the deep stuff.
I don't like that deep. I don't like that sex side.
I walked out the door coming to work this morning.